He's excused.
Alderman Howard.
She's excused.
Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman.
She's here, I don't know, she must have walked off.
Tamika.
Oh, Tamika, she couldn't make it, no.
Alderman Mohammed.
He's out of town.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Chairman Vicaro.
Present.
Two present, quorum is not met.
That's okay. So, here's, we're gonna put the sign up sheets. They're pro and con, whether or not you wanna, you know, speak on whether you wanna close the workhouse, keep the workhouse open. We do not have a quorum, but even the sponsor asked us not to take a vote. I think they wanna, he wants to do some more work in looking into things. But, we are here to listen, so, the, you know, if you're here from the public and you wanna come up and speak, I would just say, "Come on up." I wouldn't be interested, on a personal note, if you live in the city or in the county, because people come in from different areas. And this is certainly a city, you know, thing, so. And if you, you know, if you have more that you wanna say, you know, that you didn't get to say the other day, I'll certainly accept that. You don't have to re-sign up. Otherwise, I'm just gonna leave it open to public.
Anytime they speak.
Okay, so I'm wrong, you do have to sign the sheet. So, there's gonna be a pro and a con sheet up here. I assume, is there anybody here that doesn't feel you wanna close the workhouse? So, it's gonna be mostly all pro, so, I would say, if what you're gonna say has already been said, you might wanna, you know, but I'm gonna try. It's not that big of a crowd, so, usually we allow three minutes, but, you know, we'll kinda stretch that somewhat. But, we don't wanna be here till midnight, so. Okay, so, and... No, that's okay. So, they would like to kinda break this off by eight, with a little luck, maybe even quicker, but... So, I'm sorry. You wanna stick with the three minutes? We can do, I was gonna stretch it a little. We'll do five, I mean, it's okay. Try to keep, just try to, 'cause it's not that big of a crowd and some people have already spoken. I would say, I'll watch the big clock back there, but do the best you can to stay within that five minutes. And again, if it's something you've already heard, it's just repeating something, you may wanna shorten, so. Anyway, Dan, if you, there's no particular order, so, just gonna come up, sign in, and speak. Give us your name. That's fine. That's fine, sure. That's fine. I'm gonna basically let, you know, Dan to... We're gonna do it a little different, so they could just sign up as they come up. We're not gonna make them sign up prior. Just, if you guys, if you wanna speak, come up, sign your name, and we're gonna listen. I don't think, and it's just up to the committee unless you feel differently, I don't know that we'll even ask questions. I think it's just more of a listening thing. But if somebody does feel, on the committee, that they really wanna say something, we can. Okay, it's your thing, Dan.
All right, thank you Chairman Vicaro and the members of the Public Safety Committee for being here for our third hearing on the Resolution Number 205, to close the workhouse. Just a little bit of a recap. I wanted to make sure that people that were, had a feeling either for or against this resolution had an opportunity to come out and speak, other than our two other meetings that we've had during the daytime. So, I wanted to be able to have an opportunity for people to have a, speak in the evening. So, again, I thank you very much for giving me this opportunity and giving Resolution 205 this opportunity to be here. So, a couple recaps, because we've had a number of presentations on this. If you recall from the first presentation or the first day of hearings that we had, we had, the Alderman Todd came up as a co-sponsor talking about how the workhouse and the mass incarceration of this city is a kind of a continuation of systemic racism through our city, about the numbers, the percentages of African-Americans in our city that are held in the workhouse solely because of issues of bond and not being able to post bond or bail. We also, at that time, we had Alderman Rice from the Eighth Ward was able to come up as a lawyer. She was able to speak a little bit about some of the changes that have been made through the Missouri Supreme Courts, which are allowing people that are arrested and charged to be able to give them a fairer opportunity to have a quick hearing and then also to be able to have a bail that is within their means or being released on self-reconnaissance to be able to say that they are gonna be able to return to show up for their hearing. At our hearing that we had yesterday, we had the group to close the workhouse. Coalition was able to give us the full presentation on the reasons that we believe that now is the right time to say that our numbers for the workhouse, which originally held over eleven hundred people and then now is down to between two hundred and fifty, two hundred and eighty people, approximately forty percent capacity, why we believe that we have the room in our Justice Center to be able to close the workhouse, keep everyone that is a threat to society where they belong, but at the same time, to be able to come up with new ways of offering services, pre-trial services, to be able to make sure that people know when their court dates are, get them to show up, offer rides, offer ways for them to be able to fulfill their duties to the court, but also be able to be at home and take care of their families and still be able to be free until they are truly convicted and not just charged with something. So, for tonight's meeting, I will first introduce Ms. Kayla Reed to kinda give a little bit of overview. And then, we are opening this up. If anyone has anything to say, for or against, when you come up, please sign up here. And just one little housekeeping thing that we learned from yesterday, because the members of this committee have been so kind.
I have a talking point about that.
Okay, Kayla has a talking point about that, so, I'll let Kayla talk.
I just wanna speak to them just for a second. How's it ever doing?
Good.
Thank you for coming. So, you just wanna agree with one rule as a campaign. Today, you're gonna have to urge the class now. You're not gonna do that. You're gonna do this.
Just kidding.
Okay, go back to that. And then, you sign that on the floor.
Doesn't make any movement, but if you don't need to hear,
have a motion, but don't let it have audio, okay?
If you should, you understand who comes up.
All right.
Thank you.
No problem. It's what democracy looks like. Exchange. So, I wanna preface this by saying that I have a really bad cough and so, I hope that I can get through this without breaking out into cough. And I also wanna thank the Alders who are present. Alderman Clark Hubbard, I think is actually trying to get me a bottle of water, but we appreciate her. And Alderman Boyd and Alderman Vicaro, you've been at each hearing and so, we wanna say thank you for that. We appreciate the time and commitment to hearing from the constituents. I usually start with just kind of a fact piece, but I think it's important that we continue to drive home a conversation about the people that are impacted. So, my first encounter with the workhouse was before I had any memories, when I was a child. I discovered a picture of myself at my first birthday. It was myself and my brother, other relatives, and my mother wasn't in the picture. I assumed that was because she was taking the picture. I later found out that was because she wasn't present for my first birthday, because she was in the workhouse. At the time, and throughout her pregnancy with me, she struggled with drug addiction. And when upon her arrest, she sat in the workhouse for several months. Ask, thank you so much. And as a child, in the neighborhood I grew up in, which was, is now the Third Ward, formerly the Twenty-First Ward, people leaving for stints of time was normal. And they weren't going off to war. They weren't going on long vacations. They weren't going to another city for a job or a contract. They were going on Hall Street and they were doing what would become weeks and months of their lives at the Medium Security Institute. There is not a person who was born in this city that is native, that doesn't have an immediate family member who has served time in the Medium Security Institute, which, there's not a black person, let me restate that. And so, as someone who grew up understanding that folks in this neighborhood, in these zip codes where there is high levels of poverty, low levels of education, low levels of job employment, and all these kinds of factors that are results of public policy, the answer to that seemed to be to arrest and incarcerate ourselves out of a problem. I just turned thirty last Thursday.
Happy birthday.
And that problem hasn't, our decision to arrest and incarcerate people has a problem to the kinda underlying issues that we know. We've not stopped that. And so, when I became an organizer five years ago, we understood that the way we do incarceration, the way our carceral system works here, it is more punitive to those who do not have resources. If you are poor in this community, which is overwhelmingly people concentrated in North City, which makes them overwhelmingly African-American, you are more likely to be arrested, to be detained, to not be able to afford bail, and then to plead yourself out of being held at a local jail. You have to pay to talk to your loved ones while you're in that jail. And then, when you come out, you have to deal with the devastation of the time that you were away in jail. So, that can look like your children being lost to the foster care system, an eviction, you losing your job. And we were encountering these people every day. Some of them are unhoused. They cycle through our jails instead of us investing in the services that we need. Some of them are victims of domestic violence. Some of them are addicted to drugs. Some of them are just, were in the wrong place at the wrong time. And yes, some of them are accused of something that they did. But by the Constitution of this country, you are not guilty upon arrest. But in this city, if you are poor, you are immediately shackled and caged as if though you are. So, this campaign comes out of a larger vision for our city, one that does not criminalize or penalize someone because of their class position or their income. And one that does not disproportionately target people of color, mainly black people. When we started this campaign, it started with bailouts. There were people in North City who gave us five dollars, ten dollars, a hundred dollars on a GoFundMe to bail mothers out for Mother's Day because someone knew, like myself when I was a child, that there would be a kid who didn't have their mother because of the workhouse. And so, this isn't about bullying anyone or trying to convince you of facts that are not true. We started this campaign because we recognize that the people in the Medium Security Institute, they are residents of this city and they deserve better. They are our voters, they are our families, they are our parents. And when we don't solve this issue, we're going to continue to let the things that plague our community thrive and we need to invest in people so that they may thrive. What we have learned since we started this campaign two years ago is that we have worked, the people in this room, the organizations that made up this campaign, have worked to depopulate that facility. Against the Public Safety Director, against the wishes of the mayor, we figured out a way to raise the funds to bail people out. And ninety percent of those people that we bail out as a coalition, the Bail Project primarily as the partner, they return to court. And about forty-nine percent of them end up with their cases dropped. And if we were not a private intervention on that issue, they would just sit in that cage. Which begs the question, how many people have sat in that cage and took a felony that permanently disenfranchises them, limits the type of housing that they're able to get, limits the jobs that they're able to get because they just wanted to go home? And we can't continue to invest in systems that literally break people and devastate families. And so, the Resolution 205 is a step. It's a step in the direction that the city and the Board of Aldermen, as the local officials that you are, you are our primary advocates. You are the people that we vote for by our neighborhoods and in our communities. You have the ability with this resolution to say enough is enough. This jail has been open too long. We've gotten the number down to a critical amount. We do not need to hold federal detainees. And most importantly, we need to shift away from arresting and incarcerating people to investing in them. Because that is the only way we are going to see a reduction in our crime and an increase in the opportunities of future generations. We are burying children because we're not investing in them. And that is something we can do as a city, as organizations, as elected officials. Every once in a while, we can be on the same side of an issue and get something done. That's really important. And this sixteen million dollars, however much it goes to be, ends up being, can close this facility, retrain its employees, and invest in the neighborhoods that need it the most. And so, we implore you, that we have not organized for years. We don't knock on the door in the cold. We don't get pledge cards signed. We don't talk to people and tell them to come tell their most traumatizing experience to you for the sake of just being here. We do it because we know that it's an important intervention. And we hope that you listen to the voices tonight and that you truly consider that this, you get to be brave in a city where we've just let the status quo exist far too long. And we can be brave and lead this nation in reinvesting resources out of the carceral system into the people that have been devastated by it. Thank you for having this hearing this evening, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kayla. Yes, so, you've heard the stories. So, at this moment, I would like to invite anyone from the public that is able to be a test spy in front of the committee here to share your experiences, to share your stories, whether it's you personally or your families. But just to put out there exactly what the workhouse means to you personally and also share any stories that you might have of what we can do with, when we start investing in people and we start no longer incarcerating people for being poor and start investing in services to our citizens. So, at this moment, I would like to open it up to anyone in the audience that would like to say something. Again, please put your name and when you come up to speak, reiterate your name and where you live in the city so that we all know where you're coming from. So, anyone would like to come up, you're welcome.
You don't have to be shy. We're not that mean. So, if, just come up and sign up. And you don't have to speak, but if you feel like you want to, certainly. And Kayla, that was a nice talk wherever she went.
Yes.
Good evening, Alderman. My name is Todd Eel. And I'm not actually for or against at this point, but I do have a concern. Because in my mind, the facility and granting somebody bail is separate and distinct. You can grant somebody bail while in the holding cell. They used to do it when in Central. Years ago, you fill out an information and they will send information to the prosecutor attorney and they'll grant you bail while you're in the holding cell. So, to me, I think they're separate and distinct. What I'm concerned about is the people that work there. Are there anything in the bill that's gonna secure the jobs of the families that work there? If it's our position to be able to make sure that we decrease poverty, then we wanna make sure those families would not become subjected to poverty by losing their jobs. And that they become stressful and that their son and that their daughter begin to turn to crime and that their daughter and son begin to have less education because they have lost their jobs. So, I am concerned in this bill that the Board of Aldermen and whoever is campaigning for the close of the workhouse, that they're taking deep consideration the people that work there. So, to make sure that they have access to a job and keep their family safe. Thanks.
Thank you.
And so, I will mention that that has been a concern, obviously, as we've been developing this resolution. That was one of the main concerns that has been brought up by a number of the people on the Public Safety Committee from a meeting that I had a number of weeks ago with Dale Glass, who is the Corrections Commissioner. We found out that there are currently about fifty positions open at the CJC right across the street. And if anyone has not heard, that we have about seven hundred positions open throughout the city of St. Louis, not only in corrections, but everything from parks, forestry, streets, refuse, everything. So, that is a major concern for everyone that is working on this resolution. We know that fifty openings currently at CJC for corrections officers. People can be transferred directly over there. And then, if there are, they said there's about eighty-six or so, eighty-something, eighty-plus workers at the workhouse right now at the Medium Security Facility. So, anyone that cannot go directly over to the CJC, we have seven hundred positions open in the city right now. And we wanna make sure that some of the funding that we have from closing the workhouse goes to training and making sure that everyone is placed so that not one single person will lose their position, so.
So...
Anyone else want to speak?
We're here to listen, but it could be a really short meeting, too. Well, it doesn't matter. We just need your name for the minutes. We're not doing pro-con. Because I think right now, we're just, we're just listening. We're not even gonna comment. And for me, that's hard.
All right, good evening. My name is David Schmidt. I live in Maplewood. I just wanted to tell you a little bit of my story, what I've found, and bring it back to why we're here tonight, hopefully in three minutes or less. But I appreciate the opportunity and thank you for listening. I grew up in, I was born in the city of St. Louis on Bergen Avenue. When I was eight years old, my family moved to South County. I grew up there. I went to all-white schools, all-white churches. I went to an all-white college. I did not have a friend that was a person of color until ten years ago. When I met my wife, she's a physical therapist. She works at Triners. Prior to that, she did physical therapy, home health in the city of St. Louis. When we were dating, she said, "I wanna take you on a field trip and show you what I do." And we went in some homes. These are homes of people, people of color that cannot get out. They can't get in their car and drive to West County for treatment, right? And so, what I saw was heartbreaking. It wasn't that the families were heartbreaking. They were trying to do what they could to survive. They were strong and doing what they had to do, right? But what was heartbreaking was the conditions that they were living in. And so, I realized I had to ask myself two questions. How did they get there and why am I not there? What's the difference? And so, I started doing research and studying and reading and I found a lot of things that weren't in the history books that I learned at school. Four hundred years, people of color endured abuse and neglect and being treated less than human beings. Slavery, Jim Crow, lynching, civil rights, mass incarceration, war on drugs, overpolicing, racial profiling, segregation, redlining, lack of education, lack of healthcare, lack of equal opportunity for jobs. I don't know what that list makes you think of, but my thought is, if my ancestors had gone through four hundred years of hell, I don't think I'd be standing here tonight. I am not proud of the fact that I'm a product of white supremacy. I have, my life story is so much different. My wife and I adopted two African-American children. One of their aunts has been in the workhouse and she has told me the stories, just the unbelievable conditions. So, what we're talking about is a pattern of systemic racism that's still alive and well. So, what do we do with this massive injustice? First step, close the workhouse. Step one, do that. Move the inmates to the city jail. Start there. Then, go to the next step. Overcriminalization, bail system, overpolicing. And use that nineteen, or whatever that number is, nineteen million dollars for community centers that can provide real services for those that are poor and marginalized and suffering from four hundred years of trauma. So, I ask that you would please consider, seriously, closing the workhouse and then take the next step to ending the poverty and the things that we see that plague our city every day. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Well, they are considering speaking.
Okay, we have someone.
How you doing?
Good. Can you please sign up and... We just need it for the minutes. We're not gonna... You're not on any specialists. It's just that they have to do accurate minutes. So, just who you are and if you live in the city.
Oh, yeah, I live in the city. I'm Jada.
But there's a microphone too far.
Oh, yeah.
I'm Jada. I just wanted to share my story of the time that I was in the workhouse. I was there, it was the summer of two thousand seventeen, so it was hella hot. It was like a room no bigger than this one. Two big fans, like a fan on that end and a fan on that end. And I heard a lot of stories of like, people just being there for no... I was there for traffic, for like, I think it was either seventy-five or a hundred dollar bond. And I was there for six months on it. So, there was six months of me missing my child, six months of me not getting paid, you know, just six months for the traffic. But it was more sort of the conditions that was in there. Like, they basically caged us. Like, it was women straight, staying in their cells just because it was too hot, so you know, you could take your clothes off only in your cell. It was women staying in their cell because they was throwing up, because they was nauseous, because it was so hot in there. You know, it's like, even though, even if the people did do the crime, even though they didn't, you know, you still gotta treat people like they human. And people don't get treated like they humans in the workhouse. So, I feel like that's why it needs to get closed. And not only that, but they need to be looking into mental health and why people are going there opposed to it just being a crime or you doing this. Like, it was a homeless person just got locked up for, well, they said he was, it was assault with a weapon. His weapon was his cart. Basically, because he was driving, I mean, walking across the street with a cart with a lot of belongings in it, and that was his weapon. Now, I know, like, y'all know there's not no weapon. You know, so, not only that, it's just like, they try to use poverty and being poor against you and knowing you poor. They try to find little ways to lock you up knowing that it's not even accountable or you're not even guilty of what the crime is. My state there was just horrible. I know that. I just wanna speak for the people that stayed there. I know it wasn't a good state. I mean, I don't know how they keep on covering it up or trying to cover it up or how it is in there, but I know how it is in there. And it's not a good state and they treat you like animals, like straight animals. You know, I was in there for six months off a hundred dollars. If it weren't for the Bail Project, I'd still probably be in there, you know, just sitting on traffic. And the fact that they can hold you so long on just a traffic ticket is crazy. That's all I gotta say.
Just your name and do you live in the city?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, thank you for having us. My name is David Boger and I live in the Eighth Ward, close to Grand and Russell. I'm here today to speak for my friend Alvin, who has spent time in a variety of prisons. He has a job at the moment and it is a job that is a second shift. He can't be here. He has said that the time that he spent in solitary in Leavenworth Prison was better than the time he spent in the workhouse here in our city. And when I asked him what it was like in the workhouse, he just looked at me and cried. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank everyone. I appreciate this. I really do. Yes, ma'am.
Hello.
Hi. Your name and do you live in the city?
My name is Coralie Sherriffan and I live in the county.
Okay, it's okay.
I'm a huge supporter of close the workhouse. My uncle, when I was younger, he was in the workhouse. He was the only male father figure that I had in my life. I never had another one. My dad passed when I was younger. So, he was pretty much it. When he got out of the workhouse, he was never the same. His mind was changed. He was distant. He was just different. He always spoke about like, the mold on the walls, the inhumane conditions, just how bad it was. Specifically about like, the spider infestations because he ended up getting bit in his face. because he ended up getting bit in his face. I just feel like I support Close the Workhouse because I wanted to close down because of how they did my uncle, how they treated my uncle, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Might be a race. Let's see. Here we go. Just your name and if you're in the city.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hoffcamp. I'm from the Fifteenth Ward. Thank you for being here and listening. So, part of what Close the Workhouse does is we send people into our city courts to see how the bail setting process happens. And then, as a part of that, we've noticed a lot of trends. We've noticed how people end up in the workhouse, what happens during the bail setting process that puts people in the workhouse. I have witnessed personally judges setting bonds that they know, because the detainee has said, "This is beyond what I can pay," they know is just beyond what the person can pay. We have heard judges say, "We're gonna put this as your bond because we know that the bail project could bail you out," which is an obvious indication of the system not working the way it should be working. I have witnessed people being detained, being kept in the workhouse because they have mental health issues, mental health illnesses, that there aren't services for in the city. So, because there's not a place for them to be housed, because there's no one willing to give them services here, they're put back into the workhouse, which is only making their situation worse. Some people who are put in pre-trial detention do not understand what's going on, and it's obvious. They don't know. They're asking questions. Where is this jail? Where am I going? How long will I be there? Why? Like, why am I going to jail? When is the trial gonna happen? That kind of thing. And it's because they're not told, because no one's explaining to these people what's happening. It's an indication to me that we don't see these people as fully human. We're not treating them like, like with basic respect, human dignity. And in my community, in the Fifteenth Ward, when I think about what would help in terms of public safety, really, it's not about jailing our community members. It's about investing in schools, investing in community programming. It's about mental health services and treatment, and addiction treatment. And when you think about how sixteen million dollars a year could be spent in the city, like, and you really imagine, like, we could do a really good thing with that amount of money. So, the last point I wanna make is that we continue to house federal detainees in this city because we believe, or someone believes, that it makes us money. And so, the question is, like, what kind of an excuse is that to keep this place open? And where are our priorities? Should the money that we have be used to imprison people or care for our communities? And I really hope that you all will think about that question and, yeah, answer it. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, that's just for, because they have to prepare minutes for the meeting. So, your name and if you live in the city.
I'm Christine Dragonett. I'm a city resident in the Crandlette neighborhood, and I also work at the College Church on Slough's campus. And we have a program that facilitates access to Missouri State IDs and birth certificates with folks. And so, I'm just here to offer that, an often overlooked barrier is official identification. We see a lot of people who have been recently incarcerated, a lot of people who have recently come from the workhouse who unnecessarily have been hit with this instability in their lives and often had identification going into incarceration and then come out without anything. And as you know and can imagine, you need your ID for just about anything to move forward and come back and have a job and housing and all of the things that people need just to survive and thrive. And so, for people who are able to make it to our walk-in hours, they, it's necessary to make it to midtown to get there and make sure they have the documents they need. It's never been easy to get a Missouri State ID for people experiencing homelessness, for people with limited resources, and it's gotten tougher with the Real ID laws coming out. So, often, it means getting together any documents possible, often mailing off out-of-state if someone was born in a different state for their birth certificate, and then coming here to City Hall to get those documents and doing all of that before people can even imagine getting a job, getting housing, applying for social services, doing all the things that are necessary just to get back to their lives. And I think just the report that Close the Workhouse put together recently outlines all of the reasons why this is necessary, and this is just one other often overlooked barrier that people don't think about unless it's something that you've experienced.
So, if you could, hang on. I, because I wouldn't say anything. I have a quick question.
Yes.
So, I know this Friday, we're not doing it, but generally, every Friday, we have about a hundred to a hundred and twenty homeless people that come into this room at eight o'clock in the morning, and these are a lot of things we talk about. And we've been trying to get them, working to get, well, we have, actually, we had some success to try and get them jobs. If you can get together, I'd love to have your group come up and talk to them. We, we're looking, you know, our, my big thing apparently, of course, I'd like to see Larry Rice's facility open so people have somewhere to go during the day. We had a lady start a fire because she was suffering from hypothermia in the building next door, and the fire department had to come. They had to take her to the hospital for hypothermia. And what you're talking about is sort of what has had my attention for a while. And so, if you wouldn't mind, if your group would love to come up. This Friday, we're not doing it. Next Friday, Larry Rice and homeless people are having something, but the Friday after we start back up again.
Yeah, and we are happy to be a part of that conversation. I think something else that's true is that social service agencies are really stretched and are trying to meet the need that isn't there and that city funding's really needed to fill that need. So, I think with the closing of the workhouse, we would just have so many more resources to go into these sorts of meetings and affordable housing and job training and access to employment and things like that. So, absolutely, in the meantime, as like a stopgap, we're doing what we can, but we see thirty-five hundred people a year for IDs and birth certificates alone, and we turn people away. So, the, like, just the level of need and the way that the city, I think, that needs to step up in order to meet that is huge.
I don't disagree, and I think we need to work together, and I think we need to get three quarter of deeds. You know, a lot of this is state stuff, but I surely would love to have you come up and speak. We're, we're trying to work, keep people out of jail, people that are, have multiple vacancy tickets, which are city court violations, which we've been going to court with them to basically deal with these, you know, because you have people similar to what he was talking about that work a shift that you can't get into a shelter because you're working like a three-to-eleven shift, and if you don't get to the shelters before eleven, you're not in. But I'd love to have your group come up. It wouldn't take much more than one morning and a couple, about an hour of your time.
Yeah, and the ways that we criminalize homelessness is a whole other related conversation, so...
Absolutely, and that, that's where you would have my attention.
Yeah.
Because I, I, yes.
Yeah.
And I would have to say that the two older people up here with me have also been here to try to help with that problem and to talk to that. And so, anyway, and I realize that's not, and I said I wouldn't talk, so, but thank you. And if you could, please let me know. I'd love to have you come up. We're starting again, not this Friday or next Friday, but the Friday after we'll start up again.
Okay, yeah, I feel like I should see you in my time, but I will figure out what this, more about this meeting and see what is possible. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Megan Betts. I am a city resident of the Fifth Ward. A few years back, my brother-in-law was arrested. He was sent to the workhouse because at the time, we did not have the funds to bail him out. We had to fight, go to court to get his bail lowered, and we're eventually able to get him out. This was his first offense, and we had actually demonstrated that we had a strong support system for him. My brother-in-law is diagnosed with schizophrenia and has other health issues. We had to fight to get him his meds while he was in the workhouse. Luckily, we knew some people that could get in and were able to help him, because at the time, they were giving him other things that he was not supposed to be taking. He has given us bits and pieces of his experience that align with the stories that you've already heard. We used every bit of privilege we could to get him what he needed, yet the experience inside the workhouse has done its damage. I know many folks that won't come here because they, they know that if they tell their story, and they're used to their voices not being heard. I just hope that this committee will reverse that thinking and say, "We hear you, and we will act," and pass this resolution.
Thank you. I will have to say, this has been the most orderly group that I've ever seen. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Kiana Cook, and I'm speaking on behalf of Empower Missouri. Empower Missouri is a statewide nonprofit organization that advocates for the well-being of all Missourians through civic leadership, education, and research. Empower Missouri supports a wide range of social welfare issues, from affordable housing and homelessness to criminal justice reform. Today, we are here to go on record in support of Resolution 205. Keeping the workhouse open is unnecessary and inhumane, and passing this resolution is a step in the direction to defund and close the workhouse. First, St. Louis City spends sixty million dollars to fund the workhouse yearly, money that could be invested in our communities for affordable housing, job training, and education. Second, over half the detainees are being held by the city on cash bail because they cannot afford to pay it. Holding people because they cannot afford bail is unfair and unjust. Finally, the population of the workhouse has decreased by fifty-five percent, and when you take the federal detainees out of the equation, their space in the CJC that could hold inmates that are currently being housed at the workhouse, thus, the, keeping the workhouse open is unnecessary. Empower Missouri's Smart Sinister Coalition emphasizes restorative alternatives to our punitive correction systems and supports policies that empower people to overcome their financial circumstances. We join the many voices in this room and throughout our community in asking you to vote yes on Resolution 205 to work toward a system that is more just, fair, and humane. Thank you.
Yes, sir, just, yeah, if you could put that on there for a minute.
Okay?
If you live in the city, that would be nice.
I live in the city. My name is Nado Khalif. I stay in the Seventh Ward. And I'm here because I, I'm actually representing myself, but I'm also a member of the Organization for Black Struggle. And going to some of the meetings that I've been witnessing, just overall, the basic thing it comes down to for me is money. Like, I was sitting there before, some years ago, watching this on the news when people were hanging all outside the windows because of the conditions, because it was too hot and people can't breathe and things like that. And when it comes down to it, it's like, you scratch your head, and it's like, why is it still going? Why is it still allowed to happen? And as I'm sitting there with my then-ten-year-old son, black son, who looks much like me and a lot of the people that are in there are represented, we, we make up less than half the population, black people in St. Louis City, but we are the majority of the people that are in there. And so, when he asks me, the question is, "Why is this still allowed to continue? Why does it look like this? Why is it, why are the inhumane conditions?" And all I can say to him, "Son," is, "I don't know," besides the fact that it has to come down to money. Somebody must feel like it's beneficial from a profit margin standpoint or something like that for people to still live and be held in there. And then, when you think about the fact that most of the people are in a pre-trial situation, like, that had to resonate with me. When I first started hearing these numbers and, because the first thing you do is you hear about people being locked up, and you think, "Well, they must have done something," right? That's usually the conditioned thinking and the way that they try to train us to say that people are in jail because they did something wrong, but this is pre-trial. They haven't even seen anybody yet. So, they should be allowed, like, other people who have the money and can afford to be at home and wait their trial, be at home and wait to be said whether they are guilty or not. And I think that this thing just needs to be ended. It's, it's not good for anybody, not the city, not the people that are in there, not the people that, the families that it affects and people who lose work. I mean, it's just, it's done. It just needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did, did you wanna talk? If, oh, come on, come on up. I'm sorry. She was... Again, if you, just your name and if you live in the city.
Yes. My name is Teresa Wilkie from Sixth Ward. I just spent two days at Washington University in our Day of Dialogue and Action as an adjunct faculty, and our chancellor encouraged, challenged us to find out how we could be in solution, in St. Louis for St. Louis. And in following his remarks, Hank Weber presented a number of disturbing statistics about St. Louis and the increase in the ratio between per capita income of black and white residents. And in between 2000 and 2016, that ratio increased by fifty-four percent in St. Louis, which is the highest rate in the entire Midwest. Higher, it's twice as high as Detroit, five times as high as Chicago. And we have to acknowledge that some of this economic disparity is due to over-incarceration in the city of St. Louis. And my colleague who just spoke about the city residents that are over-represented in the, the city incarceration, forty-six percent of city residents identify as black or African-American, but eighty-five percent are incarcerated in the St. Louis Division of Corrections. So, Missouri has the eighth-highest incarceration rate in the country, and the incarceration rate in St. Louis is three times the state rate. So, in addition to being high in the United States, St. Louis specifically is really over-incarcerating black bodies. So, St. Louis is the second-largest city in Missouri with five percent of the population, but fourteen percent of the state's incarcerated population. So, I'm a grant writer, so I spend a lot of my time writing to try to curb symptoms of some of these things. And I would really like to see this resolution pass so that we can kind of get a little bit more upstream and really reconnect to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, the young lady in the back, did you wanna come up or...? No. Okay.
Follow me on Ashley. Come up. I just wanna tell everybody, if you don't know, this meeting is our last chance. This meeting is our last chance.
Well, not necessarily.
This is the last time. We are going to have a holy opportunity to voice our concerns about Close the Workhouse. And about this issue. If you are in this room, it is because you already support our efforts in the fight. You being here is a step, but we need you to take one more step. I know that speaking is hard. I know it's scary, but if Jada can do it, the rest of the y'all can do it. We need to hear every single person in this group. Forgive me for being emotional today, but this campaign is so personal to you. And it should be personal for y'all, too. So, I know it's scary. I know it's hard. I know you have, may have, never been in the workhouse. And everybody in this room knows me. Everybody in this room hopes for a good story so you know someone who's been impacted by the workhouse. If you've been to a campaign meeting, and you've heard us speak, if you've heard us talk, if you've heard the growling cry, if you've done a side of chant with us, we need you on that microphone. And I know it's scary, but now is the time to be brave. We're demanding that our elected officials be brave and do something that has never been done before to take a leap of faith that has never happened before anywhere in this country. So, that means we have to be brave, too. That means we have to be brave, too. There are two hundred and forty-one people in the workhouse right now who are depending on us to be brave right now. Be brave. Be brave. Okay? Be brave.
If you would just, yeah, your name and then sign up, and then let us know your name and if you live in the city.
Hello, my name is Ashley Mosley. I live in the county. And I'm here on behalf of SEIU Healthcare Union. We stand in solidarity with the Close the Workhouse program. We've done street reach. We've door-knocked. We've gone to meetings. We've gone inside of our nursing homes that we represent, and we've heard their stories about how horrible it is at the workhouse. The stories have extended from how horrible the conditions are to people sharing their stories about even sexual assault in the workhouse. And the young lady that came up and spoke before about her uncle being in the workhouse, that was also my uncle in the workhouse, and he almost lost his eye due to the inadequate healthcare conditions there. So, when I do the work for Close the Workhouse, I don't just do it for my union. I don't just do it for Close the Workhouse, but I do it for my family, and I do it for me because it's close to my heart. it's close to my heart. I just came up here to tell you all that SEIU stands in solidarity with Close the Workhouse, and we also stand in solidarity with Resolution 205, and we ask that you all just, please, take it into consideration, and please help us make this change, because we will continue to stand until the workhouse is closed permanently. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if you would, again, your name and if you live in the city or not.
Catherine Fenderson, and I live in the county. I'm just going to tell a story about my brother. You know, we grew up in Olivette. Went to Ladoo. My brother was probably the smartest person I've ever known. And when we were younger, my mother died. My mother died on his 13th birthday. And so, you know, it just did something to him, and he just never, you know, could get back right. So, you know, I have a kid that, you know, for all intents and purposes, we were privileged, we had opportunities that other people couldn't have, but what we also didn't have was, you know, just support. So, my brother got into drugs, and he ended up at the workhouse. So, from 19 until my brother will be 50 this year, he has had just a cycle of in and out of the workhouse. And when I say, and it wasn't for a different crime, it wasn't a violent crime, you know, he had drugs, but what would happen is, he would get out, you'd have to pay restitution or whatever, so he'd have a job, and he didn't want to quit his job, but then you have to go see parole officers, you have a whole system that's set up against you. And so, every single time he would go back to jail, it would be for absconding. "I can't go to work, I can't pay these fees, you know, I can't see this parole officer, I can't take off work, I'm trying to get a job." So, and I think about, what if we had the opportunity to help people instead of incarcerating people? My brother just needed help. I mean, he had a drug addiction, you know, and not once did anyone try to offer him treatment, did anyone say, "Hey, what can we do, you know, to help you?" And when I think of, you know, a community that we're in and we're paying taxes to and, you know, not caring about the people that they're supposed to represent, you know, it's difficult to sit here and just see that, and I'm just saying, every time I come to one of these budget meetings, that's all we're talking about, is that, you know, we can't afford to do this because it's not in the budget, you know, we can't afford to, you know, have these programs, that we have $16 million that's here, that we can try to do something to help our communities and we're not utilizing it. So, I'm just asking that if we're supposed to be a community that really cares, and if we're not just sitting here being placeholders, if we're not just sitting here putting on a show, then we need to start taking situations like this seriously, because it's impacting people. These aren't sensationalized stories, these aren't people that are making things up, these are people that have lost loved ones, people that have had entire families destroyed because of incarceration and over-incarceration of black and brown people, and that's just the truth. So, I'm asking for us to close this workhouse.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Watkins. I live in the 6th Ward. I just kind of want to address some things that we've been hearing from the committee over these past few meetings. As someone who's not from St. Louis, I have never been to the workhouse. I do know what it's like to be a marginalized resident in a city. I know what it's like to not have enough money to pay for your traffic tickets or for your tags to be expired and to get arrested. I've had the privilege of being arrested and being released on my own recognizance. I've... Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Don't be nervous, because we're not that mean. Shemene might be, but you know, no. No, we're an easy group, so just take your time.
Thanks.
We're easy, I'm telling you.
So, basically, if people's bails were assessed fairly, we wouldn't be in this position, we wouldn't be talking about this, the workhouse wouldn't, there's no need for it if, you know, people were treated as people who can do better. We're not the worst things that we've ever done. I've heard people sit on this committee and say that some people belong in jail, there's just no hope for anyone, but with that kind of mindset, you're just throwing away a whole city. The conditions of poverty and, like, systemic racism, they're, it's so deep and historic here, and I feel like people come here with all these reports, and you still have people's testimonies who go through the things, and then I feel like you guys are kind of disputing what people say because you went on a 20-minute tour or because of what the mayor sends out, and it would be a disservice to this city if you all didn't really listen to the people. I mean, Action St. Louis knocks doors, and we have 1,000-plus pledge cards of people with, it's just a no-brainer to them, should the workhouse be open? No. I mean, I've, although I've never lived here, I talk to people a lot who have either been in the workhouse or know someone, like we have said, and it's just, if you can ask a person on the street, what would they do with that $16 million, and it's a no-brainer, like, people need resources so they don't have to commit the crimes, or if they had the resources that they need to care for their family. And like I said, I'm fortunate enough never have, to never have been arrested, I mean, I'm sorry, to never have been detained because of my traffic tickets. I have a son, I could lose my job, like, that's just, that's wild to me. So, my time is up, but I just want to say, please, listen to the people here.
That was just my phone.
Oh, okay. Listen to the people here, listen to the constituents, and don't use that mindset as if some people, there's just no hope for anyone.
Hello, my name is Molly Metzger. I'm a resident of the 6th. I'm here in solidarity with the Close the Workhouse campaign. There is no good reason that the workhouse should exist. If this is a conversation about revenue, I would start that conversation in a very different place. Let's talk about the TIFs and the tax abatements and all these deals that are going to the disproportionately white individuals and institutions that need them the least. That's where I'd start that conversation, close the workhouse. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Julia Cushing. I'm a resident of the city of St. Louis. I'm a social worker here. I work as a community-based social worker. I work in nearly every zip code in the city of St. Louis. I work with plenty of people who have either been to the workhouse or direct family members have been to the workhouse. I've heard stories of people going there due to mental health crises that have been dealt with in the wrong way, that have been responded to with incarceration instead of help. I have spoken to clients of mine whose fathers have missed the births of their children, their first children, and just talking to plenty of people who know the inside and how awful and inhumane it is. In addition to that, I'm also part of our court monitoring program here. So, since April of last year, I have been going and monitoring bail hearings. The things that we see overall is just that the city of St. Louis continues to incarcerate people for the simple fact that they are poor and they're black. The bail project should not have to exist at all. It is unconstitutional to hold someone simply because they cannot afford their bail, and the city of St. Louis does it every single day. That's the main reason why there are still people in the workhouse. The majority of people there are there because they are poor. In addition, I'm going to just tell one short story. There was a bail hearing that I had seen a couple weeks ago. There was a man who had, was experiencing a mental health episode. The police came, they incarcerated him, he was receiving his bail hearing, and he stated that he had nothing to give for bail. He said directly, "I don't even have a pair of shoes right now." What the attorneys decided to do was that they turned off the screen. For those of you who don't know, bail hearings are dealt with through a screen, so judges do not even have to look defendants in the face, in the eyes, in order to make very big decisions about their life. And they turned off the video monitor, and they said, they were discussing between each other, you know, "Well, where's he going to go?" He had stated that he doesn't have somewhere to go if he is released from jail, and they had stated, "Well, you know, at least in jail, he has three meals and a roof over his head. We should not be addressing homelessness with incarceration, we should be addressing homelessness with money for affordable housing, and I believe that when the workhouse is closed, we should reallocate that money to affordable housing." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Please sign your name, and that's, we're not selling the list, we're just, that's just for the minutes. And if you can give us your name and if you live in the city.
Hello, my name is Hattie Swoboda Stell. I am a former employee of the St. Louis City Bail Project, and I was actually the St. Louis City Bail Disruptor for the past two years. So, that means for the past two years, I've been going to the workhouse four to five times every single week and have spoken with thousands of people who have been held there. And my experience in doing that work has been incredibly enlightening to what we as a city decide is the most appropriate response to people needing resource, and the most appropriate response that we've come up with is to hold them in a cage. I can't truly explain in such a short amount of time the amount of systemic failure that I have really seen through my work, doing work with the bail project. But I currently am also a volunteer with bail project and volunteer with the Close the Workhouse campaign. And in doing work with folks who have been incarcerated at the workhouse, I find that mostly what we see is that they come out to such little resource, they come out to little resource that leads them to not having the access to what they need in order to successfully make it back to court, in order to get back to the stability of what their lives could have been had it not been interrupted through incarceration. And really, the reallocation of those funds could do an incredible feat for the city. People could get what they truly deserve, like what was just stated, housing being an incredible lack in the city. Transportation, the amount that our organization spent on transportation was really little in comparison to what the city could offer. People getting the correct resources in order to fight their case as well and with support and understanding that there is possibility for change and difference in their lives is possible. I don't think that we need to agree on what's right, but I do think we need to agree on what's wrong. And what is wrong is people taking, it taking two weeks for someone to get a bar of soap. What is wrong is it taking two weeks for someone to be able to get a second shower, people being able to get their correct medicine. It's just wrong. So, I wasn't truly expecting to speak tonight, so I just wanted to say a quick word, but I would really appreciate the consideration of what the city could really look like with the reallocation of those funds. Thanks.
Thank you. And then, again, if you can give us your name and if you live in the city.
My name is Chris Singer. I live in the 8th Ward. I'm sorry, I normally don't speak to older people generally, I'm usually more accustomed to getting the arguments with you or yelling at you, but I'm sure you're all very lovely people. So, I just, I don't have any personal experience with the workhouse, I mean, other than knowing several people in this room that have shared their experiences already, I feel like all the facts and the things that you need are out there now, and people can supply them to you. I guess I just want to share maybe a silly anecdote, but I think it points to a larger trend that might be important for city officials. I work at this coffee shop that is in the Grove, it's like hip coffee shop, and a lot of like hip people, like white real estate developers, and people who work at Cortex all the time go there, and they have a lot of like influence and they're part of like this growing trend and like making St. Louis great and it's getting better and nicely developed. But anyway, recently, there is a, excuse me, recently, there is this fundraiser that was held there, and my point is that there were just lines out the door, it sounds like it was a madhouse, I'm glad I wasn't working that day, but it was just a huge amount of support shown to this Close the Workhouse campaign by people that I would like normally not consider to really care about such a thing, but I think that points, again, to a larger trend of like, there's a lot of national attention on criminal justice reform and closing this, closing this particular jail even, and I think that it would, I think that it's important to like notice those trends and that so much attention, even from people that you might not expect and that have some sway in the city and some power in the city, are willing to, you know, spend their money to like help support close this thing, and I think I'm rambling at this point, but that, I think, I think my point was clear. Was my point clear?
Yeah.
Great, great. Okay, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jay. I live in the 20th Ward.
Jay, you got to sign up. I know you spoke the other day, but sign up, we're just needed for the minutes.
I'm nervous, and I feel the pressure, because you all, like, have so much power, and it feels like, it's like the last minute, we can do this. And it makes me feel sad, and I hope that y'all recognize how much power you have and utilize that to do the right thing for black people, for the people in your ward. I go out and I knock doors in y'all's wards. We just finished Pan Boys Ward, on your ward, and Sarah said we have over 1,000 pledge cards, we actually have over 2,000 pledge cards. We have over 2,500 folks in y'all's wards that want to see the workhouse closed. Your constituents want to see the workhouse closed. If y'all are the voice of y'all community and y'all wards, y'all too should want to see the workhouse closed.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Coe, and I am in the 14th, 15th Ward, I apologize. I wanted to share a couple of, two quick stories of people I know who have been in the workhouse. Two of them are friends. One of them was in the workhouse and was a victim of some of the gladiator fighting that got a lot of the media attention. He was also a father, and so obviously was away from his family during that time. Another one was in there for almost a year for a crime he did not commit, and then both of them have just had a lot of financial implications, not only a burden on themselves, but also their families, their families, their mothers in particular, who have to pay this burden, both while they're gone, also the legal fees, and in addition, the fact that it's really hard to get employment after being at the workhouse, especially if you are unemployed for a long amount of time. So, those are two quick stories of just, you know, a few of the many, many stories we've already heard today. In addition, from my perspective, I've worked in community development for the last 10 years, five of which were in the city, and knowing that a lot of times CDCs are pulling a lot of weight that the city isn't doing because they don't have the resources. So, again, back to the question of where these resources could be allocated in a better way. And then, my final point is the fact that even people I know outside of St. Louis, you know, other parts of the country already have a negative perception of St. Louis for many, many reasons, including the workhouse and the fact that we even call it the workhouse in the first place. So, that's just another point I wanted to bring in terms of, this could really finally bring some positive attention to the city. Thank you.
Hi.
Just your name and if you live in the city.
My name is Tina Brown, and I'm a part-time resident in St. Louis, but I have grandkids here, so I've been spending more and more time, and it's just another personal story. And it's just another personal story that says so much about the conditions in the workhouse, which is, yes, my grandson was put in the workhouse. And, and we were able to get him out and he wasn't there that long. But when I asked him about it, he did the same thing that somebody earlier. He, he, he wouldn't say. He won't talk about it. And I guess one part of it too is when he first, we heard that that's where he was, one of my friends said, he's too pretty to be in the workhouse. So, thank you for closing the workhouse.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. And if you would please just your name and if you live in the city or not.
Hey, my name is Charles. I'm in St. Louis City. I grew up in Ferguson most of my life. I'm 26 years old. I've been here most of my life. And the times I kind of run away and leave the state, but I keep coming back for family. And out of the 26 years I've been alive, all I can think about is that absence in my life of my father. He's been in and out of incarceration most of my life. When he was maybe 10, 11 years old, he was in Kirkwood doing eminent domain and our family house was taken. And so that's really affected my father's side generationally. So once they got that little check of money, once they took the house, they were never able to put down roots from leaving Kenlock and they moved into Ferguson. And he kind of became a boxer in St. Louis and kind of built a small name for himself. But he dropped out of high school when he was in the eighth grade. So he doesn't have any education and he's in his 50s now. And so due to lack of resources, he's just kind of been in and out of the workhouse and never really there. When I look at our pictures, he's never there. I can name every one of my stepdares I had, every one of my mother's boyfriends and other male figures in my life. I can never say that Lamont Buchanan was there. And that is a direct effect of not being valued here in St. Louis as a black body, not being seen. Because Kenlock is still empty. There's no airport there. There's nothing there. But my family was completely uprooted and still really hasn't found any type of stability here in the city. And so I would like to greatly see that change, not to, another 50 years to go pass and that the same, to be the same experience of other black people here. Because there's a lot of money, you say 16 million, you could do a lot of things with 16 million dollars. And so I really just appreciate if y'all took the time to think about and value the people here and value the people that vote you into office. Because I don't want to continue to be voting if I'm just gonna be seen as just a dollar sign for incarceration versus my education and my wealth. So, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Pamela Gurney. I'm in Alderman Norrians Ward. And I left a message a week ago trying to get a meeting with him to ask him questions about where he stands. I noticed, last time I checked, he's not a cosponsor. And I don't, I'm upset that I can't get an alderperson to answer my phone call. I am the auntie of the person who was in the workhouse. And you already heard about his response. I'm upset that tax money doesn't go towards supporting people. Instead, it's going towards incarcerating people. And I don't want my tax money spent that way. It is mean spirited. There needs to be more social services. People need safety nuts after leaving incarceration and they instead fall through the cracks. This money can be spent in a different way, in a more humane and heartfelt way. Close the workhouse, finally, please.
Good evening. My name is Meredith Walker. Born and raised in St. Louis for the last 50 years. I do believe, I grew up and lived in St. Louis for the first 30 years of my life. And I've been an educator in St. Louis for approximately 30 years. 15 of those years I spent in the St. Louis public school system. I've seen the direct impact of the unnecessary chattel slavery conditions that the workhouse has created that caused children to be absent from their parents. 16 million. How many trips could I have saved going to the Goodwill, looking for school supplies, buying books, trying to supplement the programs that didn't exist because funding was cut if I had that 16 million to work with? How many children's lives would have been enriched with the programs that didn't have to be cut if there was funding available, if we weren't spending it so frivolously on unnecessarily? If the inhumane conditions of the workhouse hadn't already tugged at my heart and brought me to tears? The unnecessary wasting of taxpayers' money, teachers' time and other resources that, that come from public funding and public programs that were cut, that people that worked there out of their pure love and passion of their job had to find a way to supplement what should have been part of the resources that were there for them? 16 million. What did your kids benefit from in their school district for the additional funding that wasn't unnecessarily wasted on not giving services, on not giving humane treatment, on not fixing the problem only to create a revolving door to keep the problem? Just that is what it is, a problem. And how long are we gonna wait to continue to watch a problem no longer serve our community before we do something about it? Welcome to us doing something about it.
Thank you. Next, anyone? Yes. We have a taker. And just, just for the record, I have received a couple of calls from people from the 23rd ward. I don't know if anybody's here from the 23rd ward, but I've told them where I stand on this and what my opinion is. And anyone from the 23rd ward is, oh? Oh, yes, I have received a couple of calls from people in the 23rd ward. I've received actually a lot of calls. And I'll be honest with you, more of the people in the 23rd ward seem to be on the other side of this. I have given my opinion to whoever calls me that lives in the 23rd ward. And so I apologize if you say you haven't gotten ahold of your alderman, but I can guarantee you, if you live in the 23rd ward, whether you like my opinion or not, I will share it. Thank you. But go ahead.
Well, that actually leads me to one of the first things I was gonna say, which is I want to thank my alder, Annie Rice, for being here as an observer, although she's not a member of the committee. And I want to thank everyone here who came to listen to this testimony. And I wish there was more of you here to listen to this testimony.
It's kind of tough on a night meeting and commitments that everybody has. And we did this literally on two days' notice because we were gonna try and do everything yesterday. And the people representing the Close the Workhouse asked to be able to do their presentation yesterday during the day and then have an open forum tonight. So we literally gave most of the committee members like one day notice. And it's hard. And we'll probably have more going on. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. So I was just saying that because of the, how quick of a timing we did, when I heard from the Close the Workhouse people, they wanted to come in and speak yesterday without public testimony and then tonight, public testimony. So it was just a very quick thing. So if you don't see someone from the committee here, it has more to do with prior engagements. You know, and my life's pretty plain, so I didn't have anything going on. Anyway, and we're gonna have more meetings about this. This is not the end. And I would encourage people to email your alderman. If you feel like you haven't heard from them, email them. So anyway, and I apologize, please, just your name and where you live. And obviously Annie Rice is where, but did you sign the sheet?
I did sign the sheet.
You're so good. Thank you. Just go ahead.
I'm following rules. My name's Maureen Hanlon. I am here in my personal capacity only. Annie is my alderwoman. I simply wanted to stand up to say, and I hope others will stand up to say it too, if they feel so moved, that I'm a city resident for 11 years. I own a house. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a volunteer. I contribute in quite literally every way I can think of to contribute to the city. And it is a priority of mine with the funds that I contribute to the city, including my considerably high earnings tax, that you all close the workhouse. And so I think if others feel the same, I would encourage you to stand up and share that with your representatives. Thanks.
You're fine. Don't, don't let Elliot scare you with, he's got his, you can be on Elliot Live Facebook friends. And I will say publicly that Elliot's a great guy. He's done a lot with the homeless. He's, he's certainly out there. And he tells me his opinions and, and so don't be afraid of Elliot, please. Just, again, if you live in the city and hopefully you sign that, okay?
Carrie Kowinski. I live in the county, but I spend a lot of time in the city with family here. You know, just the accounts that I've heard from so many people who have been in the workhouse regarding the rodent infestations, the lack of air conditioning in the summer, the lack of heat in the winter, the lack of medical care. Like that alone should be reason to close the workhouse. It is literally unconstitutional. It is cruel and unusual punishment. But if that's not enough of a reason, then I think we need to look at the fact that 90% of the people who are being held there are pre-trial and they are simply there because of the fact that they cannot afford to pay bail. And 87% of the people there are black, while only 40% of the city population is black. So criminalizing blackness and poverty are not a way to create public safety. I, simply because of the color of my skin, have the privilege of never having been to the workhouse and not having any family member ever having been there. However, I deeply believe that every single person in this community is impacted by the workhouse, even if they've never heard of it. And it's only white people who have never heard of it. But when one person in our community is marginalized, it affects everybody. And so when people are torn away from their families, even though they've never been charred, even though they've never been convicted of a crime, and the average length of time in the workhouse is 10 months. And so the fact that people are losing their jobs, not being provided adequate healthcare, mental, mental health care, they're losing their housing, they're losing their families, that affects every single person in our community. And I have been talking to a lot of people who look like me, who might hear Close the Workhouse and think, well, why would we do that? Like, like a gentleman said earlier, we're conditioned to think that if somebody's in jail, they're there for a reason because they did something bad and we're safer with them in jail. But when I start to talk to people about the facts, overwhelmingly, people who you might not think would want to close the workhouse then agree that it needs to be shut down. So I just want to voice like overwhelming momentum, even in places like Kirkwood and, you know, among people who you might not think would care about it, but there is a lot of support out there to shut it down. And it's really overwhelming to think about the power that you hold to do the right thing. And I implore you to think about not only, especially the people in the workhouse and their families and the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Name it if you live in the city, please.
Hi, my name is Zee Gorley. I live in the city. I'm a resident of the 25th ward in Dutch Town. You know, when we look back on history, there are certain moments, I think we'd all agree on, that are reprehensible, right? Absolute horrific tragedies. And it's clear, I think, you can see which side certain people were on in those moments and in those periods of history. And so I really want to reflect this question back to you all, which is, which side of history do you want to be on? Because I feel like this is your moment. And for the empty chairs in the room, it's their moment too. And I really hope you'll do the right thing and be on the right side of history and close the workhouse. There's at least one baby in this room. And I think I saw a smaller child. And I think it's, again, a question of what is the St. Louis that we want our children and our grandchildren to grow up in? You've heard a lot of stories from people who have survived the hellish conditions of the workhouse. And I really want to thank those who courageously have stood up to share their story and be vulnerable in a very public way. And I also remember, you know, the stories of somebody like Mr. Sherman, who has done some contracting work throughout his life and was in the workhouse on and off. And I remember this story he said a couple of years ago about how when you paint over black mold, the dampness, it really just makes the mold even worse. And so when I recall people saying it was nearly impossible to breathe because of the black mold and I prayed to God to stay alive, I think those are moments where you're either on the side of history where you think, yes, this is an indictment on the city of St. Louis and I need to do the right thing and close the workhouse or I'm not gonna show up or I'm not gonna vote, you know, in favor of this resolution. I think that those stories really illuminate a powerful and genuinely compelling narrative. And I also think that, you know, we're also affirmed in this decision with what the budget says. When we look back over the past few years at comparing the full-time employee workman's comp settlements between the city justice center and the workhouse, even though there's on average about 200 full-time employees at the workhouse versus about 300 full-time employees in the justice center, you'll see that those millions of dollars in workman settlement, excuse me, workman's comp settlement payouts are higher to workhouse employees. Additionally, pulling some numbers from the fiscal year 19 budget. If you were to take a $100 bill to represent the general fund budget allocation to all the departments in the city, well, you see that, you know, public safety gets a lot, but what's prioritized there is policing at a total of $26.44. Again, this is operating out of a $100 bill to show. And then the workhouse receives $3.11. Compare that to how much the Department of Human Services would be allocated if we're using the $100 representation of the general fund budget. And that's 30 cents. And zero cents, not one single penny, goes to homeless services. And earlier in this hearing, there was somebody who talked about the ways in which our system, our failed system of arresting and incarcerating people really is a form of social control. And it gets poor people and black people removed from their neighborhoods, their families. And I really think that's reprehensible. And it's clear to me that there are a lot of people that would stand on the side of history that would say that's wrong. You know, Inez Bordeaux is an incredible woman and she's a colleague of mine I'm very grateful to have. And she said once before, and I've never been able to forget it, that the workhouse is irredeemable. it, that the workhouse is irredeemable. And so, I hope that you'll remember that, and when you think about which side of history you want to be on, and, you know, which side of history your colleagues want to be on, I hope you can feel confident in where you stand.
Thank you. Keep in mind, just watching the clock, it's hard and fast, 8 o'clock, so, you know, keep in mind about 20 more minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Just watching the clock. You had said you want a hard and fast 8 o'clock closure. I was just saying, keep in mind, there's about 20, 25 minutes tops. Sure. No. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. So we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna try and hold your 8 o'clock. Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to mention that for those that wanted to talk.
Good evening, Alders. My name is Anna Ginsburg. I live in the 24th Ward.
Did you sign that?
Yeah, I signed it. I will not take up a lot of your time. You've got pretrial people, minor crimes, horrible conditions. The question I want to ask, and I want, I would like you guys to consider, is why in the world should it be kept open?
If you could sign it, and then just name it if you live in the city.
Hi, my name's Alidra Allen, and I, I'm in the city. I live in the 7th Ward. And I just am here in solidarity with the Close the Workhouse campaign. I'm a diversity educator, so I spend a lot of time training people to understand different aspects of social injustice. And so, one thing that I talk about sometimes is allyship. And with allyship, one of the biggest things that we always emphasize is, in order to demonstrate allyship, you have to believe the stories of marginalized people. That's one of the main components. Privilege entitles us and often wants to make us tell people that what they're saying is true is not true. It makes us feel, because we are so privileged, that these things couldn't be happening. There's no way that, in the city of St. Louis, something like this would happen, but that's privilege. And a lot of times, as we know with race, with sexual orientation, with ability, with all different types of marginalized communities, regardless of the identity, they have very different experiences than us. And I don't think there's anything different when we start talking about the workhouse. So I just want to remind you all to believe people. When, when they're telling you their truth, when they're saying that things, these things happen, listen. And I bring that to you because, one, I honestly think that as elected officials, your job is to be an ally and to be an advocate for the people who voted for you. And if the, if Action St. Louis is telling you that there's over 2,000 people that have agreed, you know, that are saying, "No brainer is what I heard, this needs to be closed," then you are here to not do just what you think and enforce your own opinion, but you're here to listen and lift up the desires of the community. So I just want to remind you all of that as elected officials. Additionally, I think you all have an opportunity to lead the way. There's conversations about cash bail all over this nation, and I think it's fair and safe to say that cash bail is not okay. Like, it's not right that people are in, some people are in jail for crimes that other people were able to bail out for. That is not okay, that the distinction is not about the crime that was committed, but simply because what's in that person's bank account. And we know that that is classist, and we know that it's racist. So you all have the opportunity to lead the way in that arena, knowing that so many people in the workhouse are there, simply because they can't afford to be out. Additionally, this is an opportunity for you to lead the way and invest in systemic change. It's, it's clear that putting people in jail does not resolve issues. It doesn't help them to be better. It doesn't help them to learn a lesson or go out and be a productive citizen. So you have the opportunity to reinvest $16 million into resources that are actually going to get to the root of the problem and not just put a patch on a situation and make you all feel safe. And that's a whole other lecture that we won't go into about safety and why people feel unsafe. But, you know, you all have the opportunity to lead, and this, this is, this is something that is well beyond St. Louis, and it's clear, so many other people are showing us, you know, what needs to happen. So many people are standing in solidarity. Again, like Zee said, be on the right side of history and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you next?
I am. Did I jump somebody?
Didn't, I thought other people wanted to speak.
Did I jump somebody? Okay, great. I'm gonna sign in after. My name is Inez Bordeaux. I live in the 9th Ward. Dan Gunther is my alderman. I am very proud of him for bringing this resolution to the board, so I really appreciate that. I am a person that's been directly impacted by the workhouse. I was there for 30 days in 2016. I have no intention on prostrating myself in front of this committee today, but I am gonna read something. Whereas, Inez Bordeaux is a mother of four, who had been working as a licensed practical nurse when her life was derailed by a brief encounter with the law, and she was held in the city's workhouse on a technical probation violation. During her incarceration in the city's infamous workhouse jail in 2016, she experienced unsanitary conditions and inhumane conditions that cried out for change. This was the only time in her life when she felt hopeless. Because of her interactions with the criminal justice system, she was often left broke, homeless, and living in a halfway house. What I just read from was a resolution that I was honored with by the city of St. Louis last week, on the 13th. If the workhouse is so okay, if it's so fine, why was I given an award by the city for my activism work in trying to close the workhouse? There are members of this very committee whose signature is on this resolution. So, if the workhouse is okay, why was I awarded for fighting it? Why was I awarded for fighting it if the workhouse is okay? This was just last week. This was just last week. I don't sleep at night anymore. I haven't slept. I haven't had a full, restful eight hours of sleep since I got out of the workhouse in May of 2016, because I can't sleep, knowing that there are people there being held in the conditions that I experienced when I was there. These aren't old. People who were there in 2019 are complaining about the same thing. People we bailed out last week are complaining about the same thing. Last month, last year, three years ago, four years ago, 30 years ago, 40 years ago, people are complaining about the same thing that I was honored for by the city just last week. The reason I can't sleep at night is because I'm not at peace. And the reason I'm not at peace is because they say, "In order to have peace, you have to make peace with the things that have harmed you." And the thing that has harmed me is overpolicing, overcriminalization, criminalization of poverty, and the existence of the workhouse. I'm not interested in making peace with the things that have harmed me. I am interested in making war with the things that have harmed me. And this committee is standing in the way of the war that me, every single person in this room, every organization represented in this room is trying to fight. The war against overcriminalization, the war against poverty, the war against black people in this city, the failure. If this board fails to get this resolution out of this committee for a vote in front of the full board, where every single person represented in this room that lives in the city will have a voice, if this committee fails to pass this resolution, you are standing in the way of our war. There are no fences out here, as far as I'm concerned. Either you are okay with the criminalization of poverty, or you're not. Either you are okay with locking up people in a facility that should be condemned, or you're not. Either you are okay with locking up black people, or you're not. Either you are okay with racism and white supremacy, or you're not. There are no fences out here. Choose a side. Choose a side. Because if you are not with us, you are against us. And if you are against us, that means you are not ready to wage war. Everybody in this room is ready to wage war. Every single person. I am ready to wage war. I'm not interested in peace. The workhouse is standing in the way of progress of this city. We are St. Louis. This is the gateway to the West. This is where people came to do great things and then go out and spread it to the rest of the country. We can be a leader, again. We can show the rest of the country the way. We can show the rest of the country that you can decriminalize your city, you can invest in people, you can invest in communities, and you can make a difference. I've told y'all so many times, I've stood before this committee and said, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and 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 over again," and expecting a different result. If we want to change the violence in this city, if we want to change the crime in this city, we have to go to war. It is our duty to fight for our freedom, and it is our duty to win. We expect the people on this board not to be allies. We, Alidra talked about allies. We're not looking for allies. We're looking for accomplices. We're looking for co-conspirators. We're looking for people who want to go to war with us. Closing the workhouse is just the first step. Please do not stand in the way of the war we are trying to wage. Please don't stand in the way of that. As elected officials, you have a duty. You have a duty to do what's right for this city. You have a duty to do what's right by marginalized people. You have a duty to do what's right by black people, and you have a duty to fix the injustices that decades of neglect and fearmongering and racist policy put into practice have done to this city. You have a duty to join our war. So I want to know, are you with us, or are you against us?
Yeah, I'm gonna land the plane. Alderman Ricardo, alderwoman.
You've already signed then, right?
I didn't, but I promise I will. Alderman Ricardo, alderwoman Boyd, alderwoman Shreem Clark-Hubbard, alderwoman Annie Rice. This is our third meeting, and I don't know if you're, you know, paying attention to crowd size, but each time, we're getting a little bigger, because we are putting forth an argument, and we have presented the facts, not opinions about people, not historical assumptions of people, not stereotypes, but actual facts. And the facts of this case are such. I didn't go to law school, and I didn't apply this year because Blake told me to, so I'm gonna take this moment to try. I'm just kidding. The facts are, when we started this campaign, there were 700 people in the workhouse. Today, there are less than 250. That is not a result of city policy. That is a result of individual and independent and private organizations working to decarcerate the people in this community. That's driven by the bail project. What the city has done is renewed an energy around leveraging a contract that it signed many years ago to earn revenue off of federal detainees. We believe that by nullifying that contract and not holding that population of people, we can transfer a population that is currently in the workhouse to the CJC and close the workhouse and save the revenue that we spend on it each year. The facts of the case are that the city is 49% black, and 95% of the people in the workhouse are black. Over 90% of them are held pretrial, which means they have not been convicted of a crime. I don't know people who've not been impacted by policing and incarceration. They watch TV to understand the ways in which criminal justice works. And what we see on TV is not real life. When people are arrested, they are not guilty. But when they are poor, they are imprisoned. They are caged. And if the same crime is committed in the 23rd Ward as in the 3rd Ward, there's a likelihood, just based on the sheer median income of the two wards, that people on the South Side are able to be bailed out. There's a likelihood that that person won't be assigned a high bail because of the census tract that indicates the color of their skin. We do criminal justice wrong in this city, and this campaign is about so much more than just closing the workhouse, but we see that as an important step. The workhouse is a stain. The mayor has conceded the point. She wants to see a city with just one facility. The comptroller has asked for the closure of the workhouse. The treasurer has called for the closure of the workhouse. Your colleagues have called for the closure of the workhouse. The current prosecutor has stated that if we improve the way that we do pretrial detention, the workhouse will not be necessary. The person challenging her in August, who was second when she ran in 2016, put out a statement upon her announcement of campaign that she supports closing the workhouse. Experts in the field who went to law school, Mary Pat Carl has been a prosecutor for over 20 years and supports the closure of the workhouse. This is an alliance of odd-bed fellows. I tell you the truth. When I started organizing, it was because of Ferguson. I didn't want to stand next to a police officer or a prosecutor and talk about reform, but when the case and the facts are presented, you cannot deny the truth. And you have an ability right now to be brave and to be right. We will come to the 23rd Ward and present to your constituents, because I think that they are misinformed. And this report is about correcting the narratives around who deserves to be in cages. And it is too, we have ignored it too long, because they don't come in our communities, because in certain wards, they're not those people's sons, and so they turned a blind eye to it, but it's not working. If caging people worked, we wouldn't have the number-one violent crime rate in the city, in the country. If it worked, we wouldn't still be an impoverished city. If it worked, we wouldn't still be a segregated city. And what we are asking for is the opportunity to go before the full board. This is a full room on a Wednesday night, three meetings in a row. And we are just asking you to take a chance and put it before your colleagues. Let us argue the point, because we proved the case. The mayor has conceded the point. She has conceded it, that this city can function with just one jail. The comptroller has conceded it, that we can save that money and invest it someplace else. Both the incumbent prosecutor and the woman challenging her have conceded that if we do pretrial better, we won't need the workhouse. And as long as it stays open, it gives permission to the current administrations and the judges of this city to break, to continue a broken system. So we are asking that you take leadership as the elected officials closest to us, as the people that we vote for. We are not in the cold. I am coughing because I probably have a cold. Because we have been running in and out all week long. We stop our schedules. We cancel vacations. I disrupted Blake's vacation because I needed him to, we've sued the city. We've won the cases. We, on all cylinders, are moving, and we are just asking you to accept the facts that are there and help us move toward closing this workhouse. Give us a fair shot at presenting the case, because when you do, when you don't, you don't just deny this campaign, you deny the humanity of thousands of people who have been impacted by this jail, thousands. You deny the humanity of my mother. You deny the humanity of Inez. You deny our time and our patience, and I don't really want to have to keep coming down here. We got a full-count census to get. Action St. Louis is launching a campaign to make sure we get a full count. We got Medicaid expansion to get done. We got affordable housing to increase. There's so many other things that the people in this room can be focused on, but how we choose to do it is to be focused on the least of us. The least of us are in that jail on Hall Street. The least of us are in that jail on Hall Street. It has killed people, it has broken families, it has cost you too much money. The city doesn't have to hemorrhage the way that it does if it makes better decisions. And so we are asking you to pass it out of committee, give us a shot at the full board, be democratic, don't deny us our rights as voters who have done the process. We registered to vote, we elected you, we came to the meetings, we testified, we recruited more people, we wrote the op-eds, we put the people in there, we collected the pledge cards. We've done everything that you have said we needed to do to be taken seriously. So take us seriously, and please vote yes on Resolution 205. Thank you for this meeting, thank you for being here two days in a row. We hope to continue to be able to present to the full board. We know you can't take a vote tonight, but whenever we get to the point where we are ready, we will be here. Because we believe in this to the point where we will be relentless, relentless. I am done with college. I'm all in for Action St. Louis. And I will spend 100% of my time doing this. Because no child should see a picture 30 years later thinking their mother took it to find out she was in jail when what she needed was help. I don't want my story to be the story of any black kid in this city. And so you can do right by voting yes on Resolution 205. Thank you to all the co-sponsors of this legislation. Thank you to all the people who continue to show up for us. Thank you to the campaign. And we hope that you have a good night, go home and watch the debate.
Okay, so I think that was closing, it's 8 o'clock. Unless you have something to say, Alderman, Gunther, we're going to adjourn the meeting, unless you have something you want to tell us.
It's hard to follow that, so I will just say, I would hope that you would allow us to break our rules for the night and actually have a round of applause for everyone that has showed up.
Absolutely. We were fine with the round of applause, but I think it got a little more.
Yeah, it got a little loud on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Sir.
So we're adjourned. Yeah, we don't even have to make a motion, we're adjourned.